Okay, I'm gonna call to order the planning commission meeting of March 23rd. And as we know, this is a remote meeting and if anybody has would like to be part of the audiences having trouble getting in, there is a an address on the agenda and you can go to that and somebody will help you out. Um, and people are who are attending will be attending as audience and you can't be heard until you raise your hand. So could I have the roll call, please?
Okay, I'm, I'm, this is Neil Toft, the director of planning and building. I'm gonna go ahead and do roll call from the, from my top to the bottom of the screen, vice chair counselor.
Present.
Chair Wagstaff.
Present.
Commissioner Tomers.
Present.
Commissioner Tomer.
Oh.
Present and Commissioner Swisher.
Present.
Everybody is present.
Correct. So I would ask if there's anybody that has something that would like to talk about that's not on the agenda. Please raise your hands. I don't see anybody but us there, but.
I'm looking at the attendees. No one is raising their hand.
Yeah, if anybody in the attendees would want to talk about something not on the agenda, now's the time to hit the raise hand icon.
Uh, that going, moving along, I would ask for the planning directors report.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Just one brief item tonight I wanted to bring up is for the last few years, staff has been working with the Marine Climate and Energy Partnership. It's a consortium of staff members from around the agencies around Marin County, including the county staff and some other members from utilities, waste management, various agencies within Marin County that collaborate together on promoting climate action initiatives and policies, kind of a shared uh, shared effort to, you know, work together and not try to reinvent the wheel, but really build upon each other's expertise and practices. And in doing this, we've been, the Climate and Energy Partnership, one particular focus is in maintaining and updating, doing greenhouse greenhouse gas emission inventories for the city that we do annually for both the community and for city operations, as well as updating the climate action plan. The city had adopted its initial climate action plan in 2010. And for a few years, we've been in the process working with MCEP on initiatives and the the policies and programs to update the climate action plan for the next 10 years. At our last meeting of the city council, we presented the draft climate action plan, which is largely based upon work that's been done through the Marine Climate and Energy Partnership and similar to climate action plans adopted in other communities or under consideration in other communities as well. Particularly adopted by Santa fell and Marin County. So we presented this in draft to the city council and there was some feedback and I have to apologize, I meant to include and identify the this for you for the planning commission to participate, planning commission members to be able to attend and participate. That got lost in my email box. But we will be holding a workshop in the near future. We're working with the sustainability coordinator Christine O'Rourke. We're gonna be meeting tomorrow and kind of planning out the strategy for some additional public participation and engagement in a workshop before bringing it back to the city council. So I'll be sending you links to that information. The climate and action plan is largely a number of policies which relate to programs and not so much development. There are a few items that relate to code updates, building code requirements and so on, but a lot of it has to do more with programs and outreach, recycling, reducing energy usage, public works projects and things of that sort. So I'll send that information on to you later this week or early next week on the schedule for the climate action plan, but I can't go ahead and send you the the link to the current draft right now. So the only other item I had to report is that we're managing with a real skeleton crew right now. There's a lot of, there's a lot in transition. I'm working with the city manager. We're basically working with our one permit technician full time. Where now the furloughs are ending for staff, which is helpful for us, but that's just a small part of our amount of time during the week. So we do have our permit technician Jim Carrigan and Kristen is the our senior planner, but other than myself, that's sort of our main staff along with our contract building, inspection and building official services. We are using some contract planning in the meantime, and we're also looking at getting some support and plan permit technician support for temporary period as well as some additional planning services while we review the budget, the budget opportunities and look at our organization structure as we go out to begin to recruit for additional both building and planning services, recruit for positions. So we're kind of in a scramble right now. Please bear with us and I have to again commend Kristen is been doing quite a job keeping up a lot of the current planning activities and working with our consultant, Lorraine Weiss, and managing a lot of the day to day. Getting fielding email queries, phone calls and managing notices and agendas. And tonight's meeting, for instance, so again, just to kind of give you a little framework on the activities with the department. Also, as you know, the county has been scaling back some of the COVID restrictions as we are in, I believe, a red tier and looking potentially to go to orange tier in a month or two, depending on the projections and for vaccination and infection. So we'll be looking at how to operate as we get into sort of a post-COVID transition or a COVID transition to post-COVID. It presents a lot of challenges. I think we're not going to be immediately going towards meetings with public attendance in the immediate or near future. It'll probably be some time before that and we'll be taking our cues on that from administration and the city council. So any questions for, for me?
Don't see any questions. Thank you, Neil. There's no consent items in the first item and the only item on the agenda is 15 Liberty Street, which happens to be within 500 feet of where I live. So I'm going to recuse myself and have vice chair counselor take over on this item.
I'm gonna change your status to attendee Brock right now.
What's that?
I'm gonna change your status to attendee.
Thank you.
So you're gonna come off this, you should come off the screen.
I changed it.
All right.
Yeah, he just did. He disappeared. Okay, thank you. And thank you, Chair Wagstaff. So we are going to, we're going to handle design review and floor area ratio exception 21 dash oh two from 15 Liberty Street. And if, could we hear from senior planner Tyke?
Thank you very much. The applicant's proposal is to add a new 544 square foot second story addition onto this existing single story home. The proposal would increase the home from 1620 square feet to 2164 square feet with a point four nine FAR. Code currently allows 1768 square feet and a point four oh FAR. As discussed in the report, staff has generally determined that this proposal can be supported and that the resulting floor area is compatible with the site and the surrounding neighborhood and the range of FARs in this neighborhood. It otherwise meets zoning and that the findings for approval can be made is outlined in the report. However, we did note that placement of the addition sort of behind the primary ridge line of the home in the sort of tall plate exposed plate heights on the sides and the rear do create a somewhat awkward appearance. It has been standard for applications with a high FAR to be held to a rather higher standard and that they are expected to employ mass reducing techniques and architectural techniques that visually integrate in addition into a home so that it offsets the additional mass and square footage and FAR. In this case, staff was a little concerned that this wasn't done to in a manner that's as compatible with the home as say, some of the adjacent residential homes on this street where you can see that the second story was visually integrated into the roof line. The roof line tips up to the and lowers the exposed wall plate that that you see and it makes it all look a bit more integrated and less massive. So if the commission finds that this is also in a concern for you, you may wish to have a discussion about that in your deliberations. But we have provided you with findings of approval if you've determined that the proposal as designed is supportable and can be approved tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Kristen. So with that, I'd like to invite the applicant or the applicant's representative to, to present if they so wish.
Okay, Matthew Gallagher, I'm gonna allow you to talk. You need to unmute.
All right, can you hear us now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Matthew, if there's a, if this is Neil Toft, if there's a page you'd like me to go to, just direct and I'll move the screen.
Yeah, just, so this is Matthew and I'm with Jim Lynch. I've just signed in under my account, so I'll let Jim speak now.
All right, thank you. So this was our first home 54 years ago when we first came to Larkspur and started our family. It's kind of exciting. Now it's come full circle where my youngest daughter and son, her husband are gonna start, or well, they are raising their family there. So the project we're looking at is to have the two bedrooms, one bath upstairs. They have twin teenage girls. They're gonna be starting high school next year. Matt has been working from home for the last year. It appears that that's going to be the new business model. So he's gonna need an office at home. And then there's going to be room for one guest bedroom when his mother comes up from Santa Barbara. And like the rest of us, everybody's getting older, so we need to be around family. The my daughter's family, you know, she grew up in Larkspur. Her family loves Larkspur and they really want to stay in the neighborhood, but they do need more space. We followed the guidelines that the city put out for the design of buildings. We tried to keep everything to the rear. We could discuss that roof situation, Kristen, if you're so inclined. There is a problem underneath where they have an open floor plan. We're gonna be reusing or situating over the rear foundation to carry some of the load. Then we're gonna be over a sheer wall out of the laundry room to create another structural item to be able to drag the seismic forces down to the ground. In front of that, going toward the front of the building is all open floor plan. If we try to move too far to the front, it's, well, we'd have to cut the part of the living room, part of the dining room. It's just not workable. And I do have, hopefully, I do have my architect on the, on the screen at some point, David Thompson. That we were hoping that the commission can discuss this project and hopefully you can get this approved tonight so that the process can begin to get, go through the permitting process, get the contractors on board, get the discussion, the construction. Like I said, the girls are gonna be starting Redwood, middle of August. My daughter is a school teacher at Neil Cummins. She's gonna start the middle of August. It would be great if we can get the family back into the house by that time. So if the commission has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. So yes, are there, are there any questions for, from the commission for either the applicant or the applicant's representative?
It might actually, sorry, I have a question. This is Natasha. Yeah, so based on what we read in the staff reports about the using some kind of architectural technique to minimize the prominence of the addition and I mean, I did see a number of mass reducing techniques in the letter that was prepared, but it might be helpful to hear from the architect if anything more can be done and if they can't, like why, why they can't, or if there is anything that they actually can do.
Hey.
Is?
Yeah, could we hear from, from the architect?
The architect has his hand up. Matthew, I'm gonna take you off and put the architect on. And David, you need to unmute your computer.
Got it.
Right.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, great. Hi, this is David Thompson. So yeah, I guess addressing the concern on the table here. So to start with, you know, the location of the addition was a very pragmatic solution based on the existing structural components of the of the structure and finding a way to to do this addition with the, the existing house below. So you know, that's kind of why it's placed where it is, as, as Jim touched on, you know, we've set it the rear on the kind of the rear wall of the house where we have existing foundations and good solid walls for, for sheer walls and as well as the front of the addition, we can support and catch that on the laundry room wall. So you know, there was logic behind the placement of, of the structure and at the same time trying to keep the square footage of the building as tight as we could. Obviously, the Gallaghers would love to have more square footage up there by pushing the building forward, but I think, you know, that kind of works against us on two levels. One, you know, it makes the structure larger and two, it makes some complications with the, the structural system. So when I read the you know, the concerns in the comments, the most logical solution to me is that we continue the existing roof line up until it meets the front wall of the new addition. So it would, you know, continue up the plus or minus three feet back to the new addition and it would reduce the height of the wall of the new addition by, you know, close to 18 inches. And then the dormers would become more inset into the existing roof. So they, they're almost
He's answering it.
So that, to me, I think that, that kind of accomplishes the concern about the height of the, the walls on the addition by reducing that. I mean, granted, you, you'll have a little bit more roof showing and I, I do have a drawing of that if you're interested in seeing it. I can try to figure out, share my screen and show you.
Yeah.
If you, if you look at the building section one and one or two, and you can envision that existing roof line just with the slope that it's at, just continuing up until it meets the new wall of the addition.
Okay, so that would be the upper, the upper left hand corner of your chart here?
Yeah, it would be the upper left hand corner of the
Of the page.
Yeah. So you have the, the, the front existing roof there, exactly. Yeah, if you move your cursor up to the ridge right there, if you continued that slope up until it met the, the new wall of the addition. Yeah, right, approximately right there. Yeah.
David, can I ask you a, a related question to Commissioner Chalmers? If I'm, I'm looking at the wall, which I guess would be the north facing wall. So it would be to the one would be on the, the left if you're looking at the side of the house, at the front of the house. So that side, that sidewall where there's, you know, that the largest, the largest surface area of pretty much blank space. So the wall, that, that wall on the second story, so the, the distance between that wall and the edge of the roof, you know, moving toward the north is about four feet. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So is there, did you, did you consider at all maybe articulating that wall and and using some of that four feet to create a little bit more visual interest? And, and I guess the other, my other question would be, did you consider claristry windows? When I, when I visited the, when I visited the property yesterday, it just occurs to me that the, the neighboring house, I don't believe has any, any windows that actually face this residence. So the privacy, so even if there were privacy issues that, that occurred in the future, if you had claristry windows, it could add some visual interest without, without affecting the privacy.
Yes, sure. I think, you know, that was a specific request of Emily and Matt. You know, not to have any windows on the two sides as I, I think, and maybe they need to speak to this, but I believe it was just as a concern for their neighbors and keeping, you know, privacy.
I, I did find myself wondering if that, because without, you know, without, you know, radically changing your design, whether that's something that could be accomplished and provide more visual interest, in addition to maybe using those four, you know, those four square feet. I don't know if it's a structural issue. On the other side, on the opposite side of the house, there is that window, which I guess leads to the, to the stairwell. So you, you, you have that, you know, that, that visual addition, but you don't have it on the other side of the house.
Correct, correct. Yeah. I mean, I, I architecturally have no, see no reason why, you know, we, we couldn't add some detail there with, with an additional, you know, window or some, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Something, I, you know, I, yeah, I just you know, want to get Emily and Matt to, to okay that, but like you say, it could be a higher clear story window. It still maintains the privacy concerns and, and that's also the wall. Probably the best wall in the, in that bedroom to put a, you know, the bed against too, so you know, just trying not to create a conflict with windows and, and
Right. But yeah, yeah, but, but, but you, it's your opinion that you could, if need be, achieve something with claristry windows?
Yes.
Okay, I do, I'm sorry, do my colleagues, any of my other colleagues have questions for the applicant? No, seeing none. Is there anyone else among the public who wishes to speak on this application? Kristen, I don't see any.
Yep, there is one hand.
Okay.
Brock, you'll need to unmute yourself.
I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
My name is Brock Wagstaff and I live at 66 Diane Lane. And I haven't been in Heather Gardens as long as the Gallaghers have, but we've been there for, for the over 40 years, so. And I think I've watched Heather Gardens change a lot in that period of time and, and mostly for the good and and I, I don't have any problem being a person who has, you know, a small lot in a higher FAR with the FAR per se, but I do feel from an architectural standpoint that, that what's being proposed is somewhat unbalanced relative to the rest of the house. And I think there are ways that it could be made to work better by pushing it toward the street. I also realized that part of what's driving the, the height is the fact that there's almost 10 foot ceilings in the kitchen. And I'm not necessarily suggesting that they lower those, but I think there are lots and lots of solutions that leave leave the second story feeling a little more part of the, the rest of the house and I hope it's not it's something that could be accomplished. And I think they, Liberty Streets is a really nice street and and I think it's great that the children are raising their families there too. It's, this is an opportunity to, to, to make another house that sort of adds to Heather Gardens. So that's, that's my thoughts on the project and I don't know if I can engage with the architect or owner directly, but if not, I will leave it there.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Brock. Kristen, does anybody else have their hand raised?
Not at the moment.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to close the
Matthew Gallagher just raised his hand.
Okay, let's open the floor to Matthew.
Yeah, Commissioner Councillor and Commissioner Brock. So one of the items that is sort of limiting us is the main beams that are going to be carrying this and dragging the forces down seismically. Right now, we've got it in the laundry room. There will be a beam going across the open kitchen, living room area and picking up a column there and then continuing to the outside wall for more support. If we drag the house forward toward the front of the street, I'm not sure how the engineer is gonna drag his his forces down to the ground without really impacting the living room, dining room, open floor plan. I, I can understand where you're coming from, but you know, we're trying to maintain this in a pragmatic way.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I think we all, I think we all understand that. We're, we're, we're looking for we're sort of querying to see if, if there were any other solutions that you may have envisioned. Or may, or may be able to visualize, obviously without, without placing into jeopardy the structural integrity of the design. But thank you. Kristen, does anyone else have their?
For the record, that wasn't Matthew Gallagher. As I announced, it was Jim Lynch. I just need the recorder to know that.
Thank you. Kristen, does anybody else have their hand raised?
Brock Wagstaff has re-raised his hand.
Okay.
Um, I think this is the perfect sheet. I think this is the perfect sheet to look at, but I understand the beam and I understand the structure. But you could certainly cantilever the floor of the bedroom out into the into the roof space over that beam, so it can be done. And again, the the commission's just going to have to decide if it, you know, I hate to make people spend more money than than they want to, but I think there are ways to make this house, make the second story feel more a part of the house than it does right now, so that's just my my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Kristen, anyone else?
Yes, David Thompson would like to, David, you need to unmute your. David, I think you're still muted.
Hello?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that. I I totally understand what Brock's saying there and and that may be a solution. You know, my concern though is that in doing that, I think we increase the floor area upstairs. Which I guess if the commission and planning would be supportive of that as a, you know, solution to maybe deal with this mass reducing issue, then could certainly, you know, explore and explore that further and and all, but like I say, that was sort of part of trying, trying not to get too large with the addition. And so, so but I think that would, I guess, a comment or a question to hear what the commission thinks about if if pulling the front wall fur- further gives it the design aesthetic they're looking for or looking for, you know, and we increase the square footage is is that going to be a workable solution?
Okay, thank you for that. Um, Kristen, anyone else?
Um, is there, not at the moment, you may want to ask one last time.
Let me ask one last time, would anyone else care to to speak on this application?
I see no raised hands.
So seeing no more raised hands, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for their comments and findings, and I'm going to start with the first one I see, Ms. Laura.
Well, I will say that I went and looked at this project today. There are a number of houses in the neighborhood and on the street that have second story additions and there's even what's up here on the screen is, I think that's twelve Liberty, which to me doesn't look that significantly different than the project that we have before us. I think that the applicants have tried really hard to minimize the size and to live under sort of the rules and restrictions and recommendations of the city by stepping it back and bringing it in, so it's not close to neighbors on either side. We got the the signed support of all the neighbors. So I'm inclined to approve this.
Thank you, Laura. Could I hear from Natasha?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so I'm actually sort of thinking along the same lines as Laura. I took the two issues on the table, the FAR, the design review. I think the FIR, the increased FIR is is fine by me in in light of where the addition is and the setbacks, and I think really this is the only way that you can do reasonable additions in in this neighborhood. So that is not an issue. On a design review aspect, it it does, it is quite compatible with the neighborhood from what I look at. I was curious about the issues raised in the staff report. But hearing the comments and also seeing what has been done so far, I don't have a major issue with that. I'd like to hear the rest of the commissioners' comments before I make a final decision, but you know, I I think the, from my opinion, I think the placement seemed fine with me, if there's something that can be done to make it more in line with the the first floor and the main house. It might be nice to hear, but it looks like they've sort of already considered that, so that's my, that's my thoughts on this.
Thank you. Jeff?
Hi, so you know, I I lived in Heather Gardens for about seven or eight years and we remodeled our house on William Avenue. And of course, we had to deal with the FIR issue as well and a few other things, so I know that it's difficult to remodel in this area because these lots are small, I mean, they were built originally, I think, for workers and marine ships back in the nineteen forties. Many of them, and I think it's amazing what people have done with these houses in Heather Gardens. I I'm looking at twelve Liberty and honestly, I don't see a big difference between what they did there and what the Gallaghers are are trying to do here. While I appreciate Brock and he's a brilliant architect and he's got great ideas, I would not block the them from doing this and maybe they can take recommendations after the fact, but you know, time is of the essence and people do have a right to remodel their houses, I think. So I I'm in favor of the design review and in favor of approving the project, so I would vote to approve.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Jeff, so that leaves, that leaves me. So I I also appreciate that that the applicant and the applicant's architect have been very, very sensitive to the FAR ordinances that the the city has on the books. And trying their best not to, you know, not to place themselves in flagrant violation of that and to still, you know, to still meet the guidelines for for foyer ratio variance. I would have actually been, I I I tend to agree that I don't really, not inclined to to oppose this project. I do, I I would have to say though, that I would be even more supportive of of some of the modifications along the lines, maybe not completely, but along along the lines of what Brock has suggested and actually what I suggested as well with regards to clarestory windows on that side of the house, to break it up a little bit. It's not a huge issue simply because it nobody's really looking very much at that side of the house. At least not currently, because the 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 house to the, you know, to the left, I believe, is single story, certainly at that area, in that vicinity. So there's really no, not much of a visual impact for them. So I I I guess I'm I'm inclined to say, you know, you go ahead, if there were some modifications that could be made and approved ministerially, you know, for example, the clarity of windows, I would be supportive of that as well. So with that, can I get a motion? Bless you, Neil.
I would move to approve design review, FAR twenty one dash oh two for fifteen Liberty Street as recommended by the staff and in the staff report.
Can I get a second?
I can.
I'm going to second and third, thank you, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. They're not opposed and we have Commissioner Wagstaff who is accused. Okay. Thank you very much and best of luck to you.
And you might remind the.
Oh, yes, there is, yes, there is the ten day appeal, I I keep forgetting that, there is a ten day appeal period for anyone who is who would wish to contest the decision of the planning commission and the appeal just go to the city council. Okay, thank you very much and best of luck.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess we're going to bring Brock back to exercise his full authority as chair.
Okay, I'm back. Interesting process. So I guess we have business items, the first of which is approval of the minutes from February twenty third.
Yeah, I'll I'll move to, I'll move to approve the minutes of the meetings that were, yeah, that were usually first.
I'll second it. I beat you to it, okay?
All all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passed.
Well, I think I might have to abstain from this because
Oh, yeah.
I I could not attend. It was kind of lengthy, so.
Okay.
I was accused of that, to be accurate.
Okay, so noted. And does, is there any planning commissioner reports?
Did the commission see my email of earlier today?
Yeah, I just saw it, I scanned it.
Not actually, not much earlier, I apologize.
Yes.
Made it made aware, reminded of the Commissioners Academy.
I've actually registered.
This afternoon, has has anyone else registered for this area of trouble and educational opportunity?
So Neil, I didn't get a chance to really read that too carefully, but what what are the dates? Or do we know?
Well, the dates are Thursday, this Thursday and Friday, and then another
Next Wednesday, Wednesday and Thursday.
And Thursday.
Yeah.
And when we first looked at this, they had not announced any schedule, it was not clear what was, what was going to occur and when. But if you look at, in fact, I could throw this up, but in fact, I attempted to do that real quick, let me see if I can link to this, I should have done that before. Okay, so I'm going to just bring you back to my screen chair for a second. And go to here, all right. So, yeah, the academy, it's going to be on Thursday, Friday, and then next week on the twenty or the thirty first. When, Tuesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday. And then Thursday, April first. But on the schedule, it's really not, it's not a matter of having to attend every session. There are some sessions I think that could be very valuable. And then there are some others probably less so. And certainly if there are some you're interested in, but you just can't make, if you do sign up, you're able to go back and view the session on the recording.
Oh, that's good.
So you'll get materials with each of these, they've already, they've actually already on this website have shown a couple of the PowerPoint, so some of that information's already available, but I think it'd be worthwhile. For instance, so on Thursday, on this Thursday, you know, there's a morning chat, which is kind of like an online Zoom meeting, which I don't, I just not sure how valuable those would be, it's, these are so much more interesting to go and meet people. Actually talk about things over coffee table or something. And then this, like this session on can't quarantine laughter, I'm not sure that's something that's all that important. Planning Commission one oh one, that's a bolt of planning, pretty good and probably a good refresher for anyone who's been on the commission for a while. As well as certainly for people who are sort of new to planning and the planning commission. This one on Got Your Rena. Really kind of what is Rena and what are strategies to deal with it? I think this may have some value as we get into deeper into the general plan and particularly into the housing element next year. So that may be of interest and then SEQA. The California Environmental Quality Act. Again, a lot of this is kind of fed to you, you know, a lot of this is very technical, but it may be helpful for you to really kind of, if if and when we bring you SEQA matters or if you're making a decision, it may help to kind of really understand the process. And why and and kind of your role in it. So that that could be valuable. Again, this is, this is kind of like from late morning until, you know, late afternoon, so these are three, three pretty chunky sessions, and so certainly you could record one and go to it later. On Friday, there's really not much on. The speed session from nine to ten thirty actually is two quick items about the general plan. And I think another really interesting one I saw was value capture zoning and entitlements as currency generators for the city. What this is essentially seems to be focusing on is that where typical land use is trying to monetize the zoning to emphasize sales tax and TOT. That, a lot of that's going to change. And the question really is how can we begin to capture value through other types of uses and through future applications? And what can kind of, what kind of uses and activities can give back to the community in ways that you may not get from a, you 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 can't really achieve anymore through high retail and tax recovery as opposed to other uses that might really, you know, improve the quality of life for the citizens and so on, so I think it's a it's a, it sounds, looks to be an interesting discussion on trying to balancing the economic return with other sort of value generators. Value capture in through through planning and zoning. So I think those were, those look actually kind of interesting. I didn't look at this too clearly, but crafting, planning, findings and conditions of approval could be valuable, I think. We often struggle to kind of remind ourselves that it's really the findings we need to make. And this might help us as we look at zoning again, you know, how do we re, maybe modify the findings to better address the types of projects we want. So I think there's some value there, this is all just a morning session on Friday from nine to twelve. Next Monday, again, sort of a coffee chat. This could be an interesting one from nine to ten fifteen about how to conduct an effective and respectful planning commission meeting, I think. We have a great commission. You may find as we become more challenged with difficult zoning matters, housing projects, it may be, it may be harder to run a conduct, conduct an effective and respectful planning commission meeting. When you have people lining up at the doors with signs of protest. But that could, that may may come of useful, and here's another one on SEQA. This one, I think, really goes in depth and it may be more than I think most commissioners really need to deal with, again, a lot of SEQUAs, things that we we really work through and try to give you the best information. So, but it certainly is, if you want to get a little more depth on SEQA, I think that could be valuable. And then another one from one thirty to two forty five about sort of the relationship and the different sort of push and pull between the commission, the city council, their their values, their interests and planning staff. And then planning commission role, so this is more in the afternoon. Kind of where there are constraints to what the commission can do and its decision making authority. And then finally on Thursday, again, a pretty short session from nine to twelve, there is a legislative update which could be valuable. Particularly as it pertains to housing and trends coming up in the future. And then one on inclusion, how to, how to create more inclusion through planning and development process. uh, inclusion, uh, how to, how to create more inclusion through, uh, planning and development process. Um, so I think that could have some value as well. And again, that's kind of a short session. So I think we've got two days that are pretty kind of chunky. You could probably break up some of what you'd want to watch. Obviously, you know, I know some of you have more busy schedules. Maybe you all have very busy schedules. I know I have a very busy schedule. I'm not gonna be able to attend much of this as much as I would like. Um, but I think it could be, could be valuable. And again, if you do sign up, uh, the city will reimburse for the, uh, the cost of doing that. And there is, um, there's a whole FAQ if you want to really, before you get involved, decide. Um, it kind of explains the whole platform and how it's gonna work on Zoom, having a camera, um, interaction with other people, um, and the materials. And being able to view this, the recordings at a later date.
Okay, yeah. So, yeah, so, so we sign up because, uh, if we do have scheduling conflicts, and I'm going to have some, uh, over the next 10 days. Um, we can go back. We could sign up and still go back and, and, uh, and, um,
Yeah, I, I mean, I think even if you attend a couple of them live, just having the, um, having them as a resource may be valuable. And then some of you who might attend some report on it and say, here's what I learned and here's what I thought. But this was valuable or this really wasn't worthwhile. And that might sort of feed a discussion on, for others to attend or not spending time.
Okay, thank you.
So where do we go to, to sign up for this thing, Neil?
Um, let's see. I, I think I sent out, I've sent out.
There's a leak.
And, um, to, to registration.
Okay.
And you're a, a, a planning commission member, so it's, uh, $250. It's a lot easier for you to sign yourself up than for me to sort of go through the process of doing it for you and all that.
Yeah, yeah.
So if you do that, then you'll send us the receipt and we'll, um, refund the, uh, the, uh, the expense.
Okay, um, I have my COVID shot on the first one and, um, and then the second day may not be so wonderful either. So I may have to, to look at it on, uh, on Zoom later. This is my second one, so.
Jeff? Well, I was fortunate to be qualified as a disaster service worker the other day. Uh, the county kind of expanded its program for emergency services to include city employees who are disaster service workers. So I too, I got my first shot. I had very few effects except for, uh, a sore arm, but no other, no other effects so far. Are you getting your second or your first?
Second.
Second, yeah.
Yeah.
Second might be a little more.
Right. Yeah, I, I had, I've had both of the, uh, of the Moderna and I really didn't have any kind of, uh, any kind of side effect, maybe a little bit of sluggishness the first day after the, the second shot, but that's pretty much it.
So maybe it'll be able, maybe it won't make any difference. I don't know.
The Moderna, the Moderna vaccine seems to have less side effects than, uh, the Pfizer does. Uh, Dana got the Moderna and she had nothing. And when I got, I got the second Pfizer and I was sick for two days. I mean, really sick. There you go. Still went to work though.
Neil and I got Moderna, thank goodness.
Yeah, yeah.
Has everyone on this call got the vaccine?
Pretty much.
Oh, wow. So I, I can't, I haven't just, I still can't get it.
You're just young.
Young.
They do an emergency service worker.
But, you know, I actually do have a, a, um, an eligibility letter now from my mom's doctor. But it, there's, there's no va- there's no availability. There's just no availability. So I've sort of given up. I'm just gonna just wait, I think.
It'll be, it'll be available soon.
Natasha, I had a joke. I, I, I think, I thought the last in line are gonna be planners and attorneys.
Actually ended this.
Were you, it's gonna be attorneys, not planners and attorneys, just attorneys.
But Natasha. I snuck through as a disaster service worker.
Yeah, Natasha, that's only fair.
Okay, well, we're still. While we're still recording, I, I would like to make one planning commissioner report. Um, and I, and I'm not sure how much, uh, I need to go into this, but I did meet with, uh, Sia. Is that right, Neil? Sia, um, Mozami, Mozami. And, uh, I think Neil, uh, briefed us on, uh, a potential workshop for the Corbets, uh, the old Corbets, uh, buildings. And, um, I met with him on a Zoom call and he showed me their preliminary plans. I did not make, make any particular suggestions. I just listened mostly, but it's, um, it's, it's gonna definitely be a, a pretty big project if it, if it ends up moving forward. And maybe Neil has more information on that than.
Well, they have, they have submitted for a study session and I'm working right now on, on, um, getting a consultant to kind of assess because we, we'd like to make sure we're, have the bandwidth and the, um, to be able to provide for the commission a, a fairly robust report about the implications of the development, which would require a general plan amendment and a zoning amendment. Um,
Multiple.
You know, quite, quite a number of changes. So it's not a, it's, it's not a standard. Here's a, here's a big project within that fits within zoning and so on. So, um, but it is a housing project. So that presents some, you know, value relative to our housing, our current and upcoming housing element work. But, um, well, we want to be able to, I think, present to the commission some pros and cons. So you can give some feedback for the applicants on, you know, whether or not they should approach the project with some level of confidence, recognizing there's, there's no a cer- uh, uh, there's no assignment of, uh, surety or discretionary approval uh, through a study session. It's really feedback where um, the comments and particularly any critical comments are helpful for the applicants to really determine whether or not they have a project they should be um, pursuing or making changes to.
Yeah, it's a, it's a interesting concept and, um, it's quite a change from what, what's there. And, and I think what people in Larkspur are used to, so. It'll be interesting, the study session.
That's. I, I think our, because they're, it's only a contract to purchase the property. The i- the idea was maybe to get some, give them some sense of feedback on what they'll get, be getting into because they seem to have one very specific goal for it. But we'll talk about that more at the study session.
It will be publicly noticed, correct?
Yeah, we'll be doing a, a broad public notice for that. And have them at least provide some visuals. For the project.
Okay. Okay, uh, anybody else have anything to add?
Nope.
Then I would ask if, uh, somebody would like to move to adjourn.
I will move to adjourn.
Aye.
You have a second and, uh, move, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, well, um, see everybody next time.
All right, take care.
Thanks.
All right.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, bye.